I would like to call to order the Manona City Council meeting for Monday, December 7th, 2015. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder O'Connor, here. Alder Holmquist?
Here.
Alder Thomas?
Here.
Alder Bussie?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Spate?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for the thousands of people viewing tonight, if you're wondering what's different with the tables, with the desks tonight, we have a new guest. We have a new employee beginning with us. I'd like to officially welcome, on behalf of the mayor's office and the city council, April Littles, first day on the job. So congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
If you just want to give a little overview for those who've only read about you or seen your photo?
Oh, I wasn't...
That you can actually walk and talk and do all those things.
(laughing) I am, yes. I wasn't prepared to give a speech, but, um, yes, it's my first day, so thanks for this opportunity. I'm really excited about it. And, um, I'm coming from two sides of Dan County. I was in Village of Belleville on one corner, and before that, I was in Cambridge in the other corner of the county, and, um, I was in the city of Janesburg for many years before that. So, um, kind of lifelong public servant, so I'm looking forward to continuing and working for Manona.
We're thrilled to have you here, and no one's more thrilled than the mayor to have you here.
Oh, great. Super.
Nice to see that seat filled.[113.11][113.11](laughing)
Thank you.
Mark would be the same thing. So, congratulations and welcome aboard. Um, I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the November 16th meeting.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Motion second?
Yes. Corrections, deletions, Alder Bussie.
Page five, uh, first paragraph, last sentence should read Alder's Thomas and Holmquist voted against motion. And then, 1, 2, 3, fourth paragraph should read a motion by Alder Thomas, seconded by Alder Holmquist, to take $100,000. Would be corrections.
Good note, taking Alder Bussie. Thank you. Does the clerk have that noted?
Yes, they do.
All right. Further corrections and deletions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been approved. Um, we have no appearances this evening, other than, um, scheduled agenda items, so there's no public hearing.
Yep.
Oh, that's right. Jeff is not on the agenda. We do have an appearance. We have Mr. Jeff Falange from Hutchison, Shockley, and somebody else, um, here to, um, again, welcome April and to share some, as he always brings good news to the city. So, welcome Jeff.
Good evening, and I thank you. Appreciate you taking the time to just get a brief update. As you know, we're in the process of doing our capital projects borrowing for 2016. We have a successful budget. Congratulations. Uh, we will be having a first reading of our intent resolution, which is customary here in the city, uh, at your first meeting in January. Along with our $2.9 million in CIP, we have a 2008 issue that we did, obviously, in 2008 for capital projects. And we structured it with a, basically, a 17-year payout with a 10-year balloon. And we ballooned that last maturity, uh, and it's been sitting there at a four-and-a-quarter percent. Um, one of the reasons we didn't go out 17 years at that time, because as you guys know, the further we go out, the higher the interest rates go, and you're paying that interest dollar from day one. So, looking back at that particular market, we probably saved at least a percent and a quarter of additional costs on that, which was, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars in avoided interest. I'm happy to say now that we'll be restructuring that along with your CIP for another seven years. And I would estimate that based on where the market is currently, you'll pay that remaining debt out at something under a 2.4 percent. So, you know, retrospect, the Monday morning quarterbacking, I thank you for listening to my advice at that time. I'm happy that I'm still here to say, "See, I told you so. That was the right way to go." But, um, I'm... Sorry, I'm just trying to be funny.[311.52][311.52](laughing) But in any case, it certainly was the right thing to do. And it's not the first time this council has, you know, entered into that type...
And the right thing.
Yes. You've been a great council, there's no question. And as I've said before, um, one of the indications of us bringing that, and a lot of you guys were here through the whole process of bringing us from an A2 credit to a fine AA+ credit over those years, so, um, there's a lot of people to thank for that, and I'm just happy to have been a small part of it. So, uh, I did also want to touch base with you, because I have, um, a number of clients that are coming to market in the first quarter. You'll be one of them. I've had others ask me the questions, so it's probably on your mind. We hear about the Federal Reserve system, and Ms. Yellen determining that it may be time for a bump in the Fed funds rate, and clients like to know, how is that really going to affect us in the municipal marketplace? Um, I'm here to tell you that I don't think it's going to affect us much. I've been certainly watching that. The market has taken the... That effect has already appeared in the marketplace. And of course, you need to understand that the Federal Reserve, it's a short-term money rate. And we're looking at 10-year financings here in the municipal side of things. When I look at what it's done to the Treasury bill on the 10th year, it's bumped at two-hundredths of one percent. Um, and Jim and I were talking earlier, and the rates could actually be lower in February than they are right now. So, point is, I can't predict the future. Uh, we're going to have some incredible interest rates. The cost of our money is going to be certainly well under what the inflationary rate on those projects are going to be over that particular time. And I just wanted to give you guys a bit of comfort that I think the timing is very good. Uh, Mark and I are always in contact in terms of those things, and I think, as Mark will tell you, I always try to keep them updated as to those particular happenings within the municipal marketplace. Happy to answer any questions, and once again, I certainly thank you for taking me this evening. I wanted to welcome April. Uh, we were fortunate, we worked with April when she was in Cambridge, so April's worked with Paul Thompson, who is the second-best financial guy in the business.[454.12][454.12](laughing) No, he's actually quite good.
Might have been.[459.12][459.12](laughing)
If I were to be totally honest, I'd say he's probably the best financial person in the business, but he's got a year and a half on me.
Any questions of Jeff?
I may have misunderstood, misheard you speak, though, because earlier at Finance Personnel, I thanked you for having us be your only client. You just said you had a number of other clients coming up for...
You're my favorite client here, without a question.
Oh, okay. Just wanted clarification.
And, you know, I kind of feel like, like I said to you, I live here, but I don't get a chance to vote, but at least I can help in other ways. Uh, one other thing I did want to touch base on, and we've had questions about, you know, since the state has changed, or really forced municipal governments into financing and borrowing for equipment purchases that you normally wouldn't, you know, during previous times, you could put them into your budget, it really didn't affect your operational side. We try to protect your operational side, so we do have, in the CIP, some equipment, squad cars, et cetera. And I don't want anybody to think we're financing those over 10 years. We're not. We're actually financing that equipment purchase over the first three years, uh, which will be rates somewhere around 2 percent, maybe less.
Do well, so...
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Before we move on, I just wanted to note to all of you, this agenda was put together with the idea of not having a second meeting just before Christmas, so if there's anything... Um, there did not appear to be any pressing items that would warrant that meeting, and so I asked staff to try to bring forth, so, just so you have that in the back of your mind for this evening. Consent agenda, we have three approvals for operator license applications and a secondary, um, application. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Motion for approval?
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda appointments have been approved. Item G, council action items, there's no unfinished business this evening. Item 2, new business. A is consideration of Resolution 15-12-2061, adopting a facility use agreement to sell Christmas trees at Ahuska Park, brought forth by the Park and Rec Board. I would note, at Personnel and Finance, this was, um, a tie vote, of which the mayor broke the vote with an approval. Um, would, based upon what I had said earlier, would there be a motion to take this item out?
Yeah, move.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion for approval?
Second.
Motion second. Jake, and we also have the operators of, um, the tree farm. Toby and Kelly Franson are here this evening to speak and clarify on any questions. Jake?
Sure. Good evening. Um, this, uh, facility use agreement is kind of a standard agreement we have with a lot of our longstanding user groups that rent facilities and longer-term renters of facilities. And Toby Franson and Christmas Trees Delivered first started selling trees at Ahuska Park in 2012 on a one-year trial basis, and then we issued an RFP for all tree vendors to provide a response to that for a three-year contract with a minimum of $1,000 per year rent payment, um, 2013, and, and Christmas Trees Delivered and Toby were the only firm that submitted an RFP. And so we are in the final year of that three-year RFP, and at the request of Toby to have some security for his business and prove, and I'll let him explain, but in be able, in an effort to, um, have a secured location from year to year and not be outbid, so to speak, by a different vendor, um, he's requested to have a long-term agreement. This was brought to the Park and Rec Board in June. Many discussions back and forth on, um, the qualities of trees that are sold, the care taken of the facility at Ahuska Park, um, and the positive relationship with the community that he's had, has led to the recommendation of both myself and the Park and Rec Board to pursue this longer-term agreement.
Mr. Franson, would you care to address the council?
Thanks, Peter. Kelly, I'd like to thank the board for your time and also consideration. I know it's probably not the norm to have an extended contract, uh, of this nature. Um, my young bride calls it a bit of an obsession. Uh, I prefer to call it a passion for what I do. I really do, uh, look at the science side of things, and I try to provide the best quality trees for our community, trees that are going to make less mess in your house. I know a lot of people have just given up on having a tree. They don't want that mess in their house. And I've done, and continue to do, a laundry list of things, which I made the Parks Department suffer through their meeting, a good portion of those. Uh, but there's a lot of different things that I do that, for example, I trim my trees for their last cut two months early, so you don't have that pitch in your house, on your car, on yourself. Uh, we grow our trees up in our state soil, and it goes silt long. Uh, the trees are grown three hours north of here. I spent 172 days on the road last year. We were a little lonely. Uh, but I grow beautiful trees and to bring them back to our community. Um, excuse me. Um, even though I'm a tree farmer, I've been doing this since I'm this high, when I go to somebody else's tree lot, it's pretty much Russian roulette as to what you're going to get. You know, you just don't know. Even, even me, looking at a tree, it's hard. Most trees are actually harvested over 90 percent in October, and I get the... When I say that. But yeah, I can't do that to my customers. I look my, those folks in the eye, and I hope to see you every year for the next 20 years. And if I can keep less mess in your house, uh, we're both winning. Our, our company had two milestones yesterday, uh, with, in our fourth year, we started, uh, well, three, four years ago, with under 300 trees. Two years later, we sold over 700. People are amazingly loyal when they finally find a good tree that doesn't make a mess in their house. Uh, we're having friends bring friends, neighbors bring neighbors. Uh, it's wonderful. We're going to sell out again. Uh, we sold 21 percent of what we brought down in our first three days this year. Uh, it, it makes a difference in bringing better products to the community. Um, our two milestones is...
(inaudible).
Yes.[878.13][878.13](laughing) Yesterday, uh, about noon, we sold our 2,000th tree, uh, coming out of Ahuska Park. I'm all high, thinking that was great, and about an hour or so later, a lady came in, and she had bought a different type of tree that she had never had before. Normally, people buy the frasers to hold their needles. She had bought one that was a cross, that was very fragrant, but loses a few more needles. She wasn't used to that, wasn't happy, come back, and we may, I absolutely wouldn't take any money, I'd give her another Fraser for her and send her down the road. Repeat customer, by the way, thank you to my repeat customers. Uh, appreciate you being here. Uh, we may have had our first bad tree. One out of 2,000 probably isn't too bad, but that is truly our first complaint on a tree. So, um, last year, I planted a whole bunch of trees that will not even come to market at the end of this 15-year contract. We've made our long-term commitment. Yes, Christmas trees is a long-term deal. And it's, uh, it's difficult, because I love the community and I don't want to put any undue pressure on you, but we cannot continue to put my entire livelihood at jeopardy every time a contract comes up. Uh, the way the contract is set up, I'm reviewed every five years. I believe there's been absolutely zero issues in the last four. Um, the rent, as Jake may show, is a little on the high side, and it's scheduled to go up every year. But for us, it isn't about what we have now, it's what we're building. So, uh, thank you for your time. I appreciate the consideration. I hope, uh, we can do this for another 20 years.
Excellent. And had you not confessed to your one, I had asked at Personnel and Finance if there's ever been a complaint, and in the four years, the city has not received a single complaint. And the other question of any, when you drive past, probably one of the saddest moments is at the end of the holidays, when you see these lots with their Charlie Brown trees laying in a pile there. But the city has no cleanup responsibilities. The Francins take care of all their own, so they do a good job. I just wanted to point that out, too. Questions of either Mr. Franson or Jake? Alder Bussie?
Yeah, Jake, if you want to share a couple of questions I brought up, um, 15 years just seemed like a long time to me. And to make that, uh, commitment, also, the increase after five years, uh, the $25 per year increase accounted, came to like 3 percent. Um, you know, over five years is, uh, three-tenths of a percent a year on average, so if you want to address those issues for the rest of the folks.
Sure. In item 3, under the term and termination, it, it talks about the length of the agreement, and then the last line about the city may, for any reason or no reason at all, terminate the screen upon 30 days' notice. And it's what all user groups and vendors certainly don't like to see, but it does, drafted by, you know, Attorney Cole, always give the city an out in case things would change. Um, so there's the flexibility there. I, I think in good faith, you know, we look at these long-term facility use agreements, or any of these agreements, is that each party is holding up kind of their end of the donkey, so to speak. Um, and as far as the, the term, as far as the, the fee proposal, I was certainly comfortable with what it's at going forward, um, as, as having a guaranteed revenue source. Uh, it does fall into the recreation, uh, budget on the revenue side. It offsets, um, athletic field maintenance. So, it's basically, we have a field, park field rental account that it goes into, and a park field maintenance, and they're kind of a, a one-for-one. And we did that a couple of years ago to help with, um, all of our athletic fields, from replacing lights to irrigation, overseeding, composting. Um, so I'm comfortable with that. It would be less comfortable with, um, not knowing if we were going to get a response to an RFP or getting a vendor that we may have issues with down the road that will end up costing us, uh, you know, more than this amount per year.
Additional questions? Alder Spate?
I will confess that when I read this, that the Parks Board, I thought we were increasing the fee $25 a year, but it appears that that's not the case. And that, and, you know, $25 a year would be less than a 2 percent increase annually. And of course, every year, it would be less of a percent of an increase. And the cost of maintaining our athletic fields and everything else does go up certainly, uh, by a percent or two every year. So, um, I, I just, it's a good catch, Alder Bussie, and I didn't, uh, you know, I was thinking we were going up $25 a year, and I think we started at 1,000 three years ago, correct?
Yeah, it was 750 the first year, and then when we did the RFP, it's, was at the 1650 per year of the, of the first three years. And it's 25 a year, 25 per year after the fifth year.
Okay.
So it's 25 per year after the first five years.
Okay.
Alder Thomas?
So, I heard you say earlier that this is higher than the average cost. What's the average cost?
And I think in...
Topped.
It depends on, you know, the size of the lot and how many trees that you're bringing down, but I think it was ranging from, you know, $500 a year to, you know, 1,300, 1,400. And I, I would defer to Toby on that, but I...
That's, or, like, at the mall, the big, the big mall where there, you know, the traffic is huge, it's out in 1,300, 1,400. And we're at, what, 1650?
1650, yeah.
So we're, so, so the idea is that it's, it'll take us the first five years to get...
Kind of right, to balance out as far as, you know, basically, uh, you know, when we do a blind RFP bid, for example, you, it's like an auction, you might overbid for something or underbid, and, and, you know, I think Toby, because he really wanted the spot, wanted to make sure he got it with the bid that he presented. Um, but so we, we're the benefactor of that. With him being the only bid, he could have bid $1,000 and gotten it, which was part of the RFP, you know, process. Um, so we kind of have made out over these first, you know, three years of the, you know, use agreement.
Alder Holmquist?
Jake, some of the other long-term commitments that we have, for example, like renting the tennis court, um, roughly, what's the range for timeframe and cost structure? And I know they're not apples and apples.
Right. Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, if you're looking at, let's say, a football game rental, it's $150 per game. Really, the, the groups that are for longer-term use are on the, they want to be on the priority use structure, for example. This one is interesting, because it's the use of a parking lot. It's not necessarily a field, and it's during a, a time period where the majority of all park, other park operations are closed. Um, but it just, it depends, you know, on our, on what our fee schedule is, um, and what we have as far as a use agreement with some of the other groups. Like, USA, USTA Tennis, since they're the only game in town, they're not on a facility use agreement. They, they don't need to be. Um, like, youth football is. Manona football is. Manona swim and dive team is. And we're working, uh, Manona Softball Association is, that will come to this, aboard, hopefully. Um, and we try to get all of our different groups on a certain length of, of terms. Farmers market is, I think they might be expiring, they might be ending their five-year. So we had a five-year with Manona Farmers Markets, and I would anticipate they would probably come back with something similar as well.
Alder Thomas?
Did we buy the Christmas tree in the cathedral?
No, that was actually donated by Toby.
And that's, well, I mean, that's my point. There, there, I, I mean, we do, we do use Christmas trees in the city, and they could charge us, or they could give it to us.
Correct. Yep, and there are also donates, um, to others for our practice with Santa, so the trees in the community center are donated by Toby as well.
Additional questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Congratulations. That special mayor tree, Wednesday night will be in.[1438.23][1438.23](laughing) And I'll make sure my wife brings a checkbook.[1443.51][1443.51](laughing)
I didn't want to call you up.
Okay, all right. You hadn't seen me yet. Thank you for your good service to the community.
Thank you. I'm a community member. It's been amazing.
What's being next? Oh. Item 2B, you'll notice start for immediate action is consideration of Resolution 15-12-2062, withdrawing from the local government property insurance fund brought forth by the finance director.
Suspend the rules, take this item out of order.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for approval?
Motion for approval? Second.
Motion second for approval. Mark?
This is a, um, authorization to withdraw from the state's insurance, um, fund. Basically, they cover the buildings, it's for the buildings. Um, like, we have vehicles through Civic, we have all our insurance through their Civic Insurance Carrier. Um, I don't know if you're aware, during the last budget, Governor Walker, um, they, they were going to eliminate this fund altogether, but they decided to keep it. But they, what they ended up doing is they basically jacked up the, uh, the premiums. They basically over-doubled, uh, what our premiums are. So what we did is we budgeted, and we got a quote from, uh, our current insurance carrier. Uh, we, it is less, it's definitely less than what the state pool was. So this is authorization to withdraw from that. With that, we, um, have another quote coming from an insurance company to have a, to compare, um, what Civic gave us to what the new person gave us as a local insurance carrier. And so eventually, we'll have to pick one or the other, um, based on the, uh, the information on that. This is just to start the process, so we can send to the state that we are going to withdraw from their fund.
Questions? Alder Holmquist?
When you said our premium would be cheaper, is that cheaper than the jack-up rate or the current rate?
Uh, it would be roughly what the current rate, what the, the current 2015 rate is, so...
The non-inflated?
Right. Yeah. Very similar to what that rate would be.
Alder Spate?
Mark, I'm, I'm curious to know who will be reviewing the different policies that are coming into the city? I mean, will Attorney Cole be reviewing them? And I ask that question just because so often with insurance, you know, there are exclusions and just there are a litany of, you know, fine print details that can make a big difference when you have to file a claim.
Uh, definitely. Um, one would be, will be, Bill will be coming in, and also people will be looking at the new one.
Okay.
But what it is, is, uh, I'm just saying, not saying we're going with Civic right away, but they do carry our, all, our insurance, like workers' comp, our property, not property, but our vehicle insurance, uh, all, all the other insurance you can think of, they cover for us, because we are owner of the insurance company.
Right.
So what they do, once the state decided they were going to go, first they were going to leave the, uh, the insurance thing, they actually got together, uh, and started, basically, a big pool, uh, maybe part of that big, if we go with them, a big pool of that. Um, so Bill Cole would be involved, people would be involved, uh, if he ended up going with them, so they would be, uh, recognize. Since we're one of the owners, it's, you know, to their advantage to, uh, help us out with that, to keep their premiums down.
Additional questions? Hearing none. Oh.
I just, what is our, what is our premium for this year? What was that?
Um, for 2015...
14?
15, I'm sorry. It's roughly around, uh, it's not, it's not, it's roughly around 18,000.
No additional questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration passes. Thank you, Mark. Reports of commission's committees. Jake, anything you wish to report?
Three things tonight. One, breakfast with Santa is this Saturday at the Manona Community Center.
Any Christmas trees there?
There are. Multiple Christmas trees there. Thank you to Badger Furs. Uh, all of our tickets have been sold out since before Thanksgiving, so over 350 people will be attending. We would love to see your smiling and happy face there, and, uh, maybe flipping a few We would love to see your smiling and happy face there and, uh, maybe flipping a few pancakes or two would help.
What time?
Um, the first seating is at eight AM, but if you're wishing to volunteer, we'd love to have you there at around seven AM. I can get you out of there by nine AM or come at nine AM and I'll get you out of there at eleven AM. So not only do we have a full, uh, breakfast and opportunities to take pictures with Santa and Mrs. Claus, we have a craft fair for the kids put on by our friends of the Manona Senior Center and we have horse and carriage rides around the, uh, parking lot, so it'll be a fun day, uh, to try to bring the spirit of the holidays even though we have no snow or cold weather. Uh, two, I would like to just publicly thank Mark Kotacher as interim, uh, city administrator, a lot of times being the, uh, um, you know, bean counter, doesn't get a lot of thanks, but he's always done a great job of, uh, helping the city staff with budgets and, and his role as a interim administrator, even Keel, and, and did a great job and kept the ship running, so kudos to Mark. Yeah.
Yeah, what's the last, the third thing, yeah.
Uh, and I did have one others and now I can't, uh-
To welcome the new, I'll welcome April.
And, and, and we wanna thank you because the gazebo is stunning and gorgeous this year, I don't know if you did it, don't know if you got the stuff, but, but it's really looks swell.
We, we've been fortunate with such great weather to be able to spend additional time out in the parks to make it look as lovely as we can.
Mary Ann is just, her and a Kajue swap.
You're not joking about that, I noticed, today's Monday must've been Thursday or so, I saw guys cleaning the gardens, Frostwoods Beach Garden.
Yes.
Parks guy, you know, it's December, so it's, the city's gonna be looking fine for spring.
They're gonna open the golf course in Madison.
Yeah, I see that.
Alright, gosh, I had an important thing, oh, oh yeah, good news, good news, bad news. Um, so, remember a couple of weeks ago when people attended this meeting complaining about the lights at Oneida Park, uh, that went to plan commission, um, we offered five different fixture options to, uh, plan commission, picked one, um, got a quote, ten thousand dollars.
Jeez.
So, that'll be coming back at a-
Always spending money.
Future meeting, of course, I know it's my fault, uh, that'll come back at a meeting in January to figure out how we're going to pay for that.
Is there cardboard to shield them? Wouldn't work.
So, just FYI.
Alright, Mark, anything you wanted to add? Alder O'Connor?
No report.
Alder Spate?
No report.
Alder Wood?
No report.
Alder Holmquist?
No report.
Alder Thomas?
I have no report, but are you gonna talk about Toren Young?
I will be happy to do so.
Thank you.
Alder Bussie?
No report.
Uh, what's your title now, again? City Administrator, little.
It's the smallest title I think I've ever had, so I'm kind of excited about that.
We like brevity.
Yes, nice and, nice and brief.
Well, welcome again and, um, we certainly are excited to see you put forth, leave your thumbprint as Pat did on this city, so, welcome. I do have a few announcements, uh, Alder Thomas already alluded, um, Manona Grove's stellar football team, which does well year after year, starting in fourth grade with Maury Hawk Ride all the way up, but has created another first in that Toren Young, one of the players was selected to appear in the blue-gray game in Jacksonville, Florida in January, first time that's ever happened, I'm not aware of anyone in the state that I, that I, you know, crossed my memory, but he was selected and there is a fee to, you know, transportation and everything, so there's a GoFundMe program that Alder Thomas made me aware of, um, and several others today, that he's looking to raise thirty-two hundred dollars and I don't know if it just started today, but he's twenty-five percent of the way tonight already, so if, if you would be so considerate to take a look at that, it is a prestigious honor for somebody who, from what I understand, is very well-deserving both for his work at school and athletically, so, thank you, Alder Thomas. He's going to Ireland?
Iowa.
Oh, I was gonna say Ireland, I'll, I'll pick up this, I'll pay for it.
I'd like to go to Iowa, Ireland.
Um, second thing is, in the year of the bike, as we're wrapping up the year of the bike, um, I don't think, I mentioned this at the last meeting, but we were privileged to have been selected as a bronze category award-winning city, um, by the Bike Association, whoever determines, um, Madison became one of four platinum cities in the country and we've made our start, our foray into award-winning bicycle routes and, um, the more I look into it and just read some articles tonight at dinner before I came in here about the importance of exercise and healthy living for a community to keep our costs and living expenses down, it's amazing. Um, another highlight, I had the privilege, as did Alder Thomas and the newspaper was there, but last evening, the former First Lady, Mary Ann Litchfield threw one of her soirees, uh, to help the honor flight and raise thousands of dollars, um, for this is the first of which she hopes is an annual event. Just had a wonderful evening at the East Side Club for a great cause and we had two World War II vets attend, it was pretty, considering the generation I grew up in, in the lack of respect for the military, it just blows me away to see people rise to their feet when these World War II vets just walk to the front of the room, so it was pretty cool. Again, one of those many things that makes me proud to live in this city. And then finally, on the business front, um, some exciting news that although I've been working hard to get more and more restaurant opportunities, I fell short on the restaurant, but I got the restaurateur, no, uh, you may or may not be aware, but Food Fight Restaurant Group, they have moved their corporate headquarters to Manona as of last week, they purchased the Devonish Building on Manona Drive and it was very, they wanted it to be pretty hush-hush, but hopefully you'll be hearing a lot more of that as they're coming forth with their pride and excitement about moving in and at least the verbal commitment and interest that this is step one in a long-term relationship with the city of Manona, so hopefully we'll, we need- Need more beer tap lines in this city, so, a hundred and fifty new ones is just not enough for this mayor, so, um, we welcome, if they're watching, uh, tonight, the Food Fight Group, so, unless there's anything else, we have a number of appointments, Val Edwards to the library board, David Lombardo, a new appointee to the CDA, um, I would entertain a motion for approval of those appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, appointments are, been made, um, and then there are a whole slew, the cadre of election officials and inspectors and deputies that are put forth, I would entertain a motion for approval of the, I should ask Joan, is there anything?
Thank you for remembering me, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor Wood screwed that up, didn't he?
Oh, payback.
Payback.
Yeah, I, I would like to say that, uh, the city of Manona, once again, is so fortunate to have such wonderful, uh, citizens willing to serve, um, their, 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 uh, friends and neighbors to help them vote and we have wonderful chief inspector here on the council and a wonderful election inspector on the council who are, uh, do a fantastic job for Manona residents, um, it, it's an outstanding group of people and, um, everybody cares deeply about what they're doing, so your vote's gonna count, no doubt, in Manona.
Alright, sorry about that, I'm so excited to have April here that I-
Do we need to abstain since our names are on the whiz?
Um-
I don't think so.
I, you know, no, I think there's an-
All those in favor of approval of the slate of inspectors, deputies and, that's it, I guess, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We have a, I'm sorry, was there a motion for this section?
I'll move him, I'll second.
I thought I heard that. There's a motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, best wishes for happy holidays, safe holidays, we'll see you all back in this wonderful city in January, thanks everyone, meetings adjourned.
I will be gone the entire month of January.
To where?
Florida to take care of my mother, preparing to leave.
No, I know, ooh, what happened?
Oh, well, I, I planned to go-